Okay, so welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit which is to the left of this room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda, extra copies which are by the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If the case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding the application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant and site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any of the public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to the public input and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at this point. And a couple of points of order before we start. First off, there's been a couple of questions regarding the agenda tonight. If anyone is here for one of the tabled items, which is the zoning board of appeals referral for Densmore, that will not be taken off the table tonight for discussion. There may be a status given later tonight, but I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. And in addition, we'd like to welcome Spencer Reed, who is a new addition to the board. Welcome and thank you for your service to the town of Arundicote. Thank you. And with that, Donna, would you like to call the first case?
Sure. PB 1701-1, upon the matter of request by Nora Dobridge for signage approval to install a new wall sign for Flower City Yoga on premises 657 Titus Avenue in a mixed-use commercial district, resident, I mean, mixed-use commercial district.
Hi, my name is Kasia Plepko. I'm representing Flower City Yoga tonight, 657 Titus Avenue. Should I just go ahead?
So go ahead and just give us an overview.
All right, so we were here at the planning board workshop last Monday and discussing our approval for signage. We started talking about lighting and I have in front of you some of the options we've, we're looking at to install three gooseneck lights above the sign. And there's some information about color and any other information that you might need and just feel free to let me know if you have any questions. I don't know exactly dimension-wise. I actually tried to get some input from some other businesses within the Muck District, but I haven't heard back from anybody yet, so still in process.
Okay. Would you like to just explain what your business is and what you're asking the board for with the sign and everything?
Sure. We are a yoga co-op consisting of four yoga instructors and we'll be offering classes from the morning until the evenings. And we're looking to bring some wellness to the people of Arundicote in the next year or so, and hopefully longer, if it lasts.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to share?
I don't know. Do I need to say anything? I mean, I know you all saw the actual signage last week, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think we're okay. Okay, so this is a public hearing, correct? So is there anybody, I'm sorry, so unless there's anything else, I'll let you take a seat and we'll let the public come up.
I think that's it. If anybody has any questions, just feel free to let me know.
Okay. Well, actually, I should ask, does the board have any questions? Thank you, before I let you sit down. I'll go around. Mr. Eblin?
I have no questions. I'd just like to say that these are nice options you brought. I'm particularly fond of number two, I don't know how you guys feel, but the Millennium Lighting RLM 10-inch angled shade black is, would be my preference, but thank you for bringing some.
Of course. And I did want to mention the first option on there is one that we can actually source locally and the other two are some that we can get online, so.
I appreciate you looking into that, too.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
No comment. I tend to agree that I think all three of the options would be, would be fine. I think the two that have kind of the angled shade would be a little better to direct the light back on the building, but I think any of them would be fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Richards?
Thank you for listening to us at the workshop and I appreciate your interaction and being able to bring this to us. I think you're going to be, your business will actually help create that district and make that a place that Arundicote residents will feel very proud to say, "Come here and see what we have to offer." So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Palermo?
I too like one of the first two illustrations that you showed. I think I lean towards the Millennium Lighting. It's a little lighter, the sign isn't extraordinarily large. I don't know what, how many you'd need, but you guys know all that stuff, but that's my put. The rest is great.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hollenbeck?
I have no questions.
Thanks.
Mr. Huber?
Yeah, thank you. I think that all three of these lighting options are great. I agree with the rest of the board that number two seems a little better. I don't know if that's terribly more expensive than the other ones. I wouldn't, don't want to put, you know, you're already coming, you know, so if number two's like way more expensive than the other ones, then I wouldn't want to put a hardship on you like under the style, but I think that it looks great and I think that you're going to be making a great contribution to the district, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll echo everything everybody on the board said and thank you for listening to the board and participating in the workshop. I just wanted to put on the record, are you, did you receive a copy of the letter from HIP?
I did.
You did, so you're familiar with what it says and everything.
Yes, that was great.
It was basically approval of what you're doing, so.
Yes, it was wonderful. Thank you.
With that, I'll let you take a seat and we'll see if anybody has any comments or questions.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody who would like to address the board on this matter?
Good evening. My name is Ann Burns. I live at 199 Bellhurst Drive and I'm here on behalf of the community group Helping Arundicote Plan for Progress, also known as the HIP group. Myself and Jeff Goldblatt are the co-chairs and we have been working the last 20 years to bring about the renaissance of this neighborhood, the Titus Cooper Hudson neighborhood. We have brought the community together to do charrettes and we have to say that we are so excited. I'm a practicing yoga practitioner, so I'm very excited. It's going to bring people together. It's another way to bring people together in this neighborhood in a healthy way. And so we do, we applaud the addition. And thank you also for spending the extra money on the new lighting. It's really going to dress that building up a lot, so thank you. We thank you all the way around. We can't wait for you guys to move in.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? With that, is there anything the applicant would like to add? I do have one more question for you, forgot to ask. Will you be, yes, you can come up. Oh, close the public hearing first, sorry. Will you be removing the current?
Yes, we're going to remove the current lighting and then put the other ones up. And we actually spoke to a few electricians and I think they can either go through the existing light or perhaps go up through the wall and then over the roof. So I don't know if there are any comments as to what you prefer. I believe he said if they use conduit and go through the existing light, it's something that we could paint that would just blend in with the facade. So I didn't know if it mattered either way.
Anybody have any questions?
Leave that to the pros who put it up.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
With that, is there anybody who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Upon the matter of request by Nora Dobridge, sorry, for signage approval to install a new wall signage, Flower City Yoga on premises 657 Titus Avenue in a Muck multi-use district, I move that we approve the sign with the addition to the lighting that has been added at the applicant's request.
Okay, can I modify that a little bit? I said, "Remove current lighting and add new gooseneck."
Sounded almost like what I said.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Everybody who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody who's opposed, please say nay. And there's nobody abstaining or absent.
And Mr. Chairman, you may just want to let the record reflect that that's a type two action for purposes of Seeker.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much and good luck with the business.
Okay, PB 1701-2, upon the matter of request by John H. Sharaba, acting as agent for FRS Properties LLC for subdivision approval to subdivide a 6.55 acre parcel into two lots on premises tax ID number 047.14-1-2.1 vicinity of 5045 St. Paul Boulevard and a waterfront development district, a river harbor district, and an R2 residential district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Sharaba with Lantec. This evening, I'm representing FRS Properties, who is the owner of the former CSX railroad property that runs basically from Genesee River to the west right away of St. Paul Boulevard. That land was purchased in 2009 and since this, that time has sat relatively dormant. The proposal for you this evening is merely subdivision of the property. We're not proposing any structures on it at all. We're going to subdivide about five and a half acres, that's Lot Two, which is a majority of the parcel that'll run from the west right away of St. Paul Boulevard almost to the river. And that is under contract currently with the Rochester Yacht Club for purchase, so that will be purchased by the yacht club. The remaining lands in the town of Arundicote will be part of the Marina operation of Shumway Marina and there's additional lands that are in the city of Rochester as well. Again, as I said, we're proposing no structures in the town of Arundicote and we're hoping that this is just a merely subdivision approval so that this lot can be sold and basically operate as it currently does. There are some obstacles to development of this right-of-way property. I know people get nervous when they see large tracts of land being sold. When the railroad sold it, there is a deed restriction that no single-family houses can be constructed on the majority of this property. Also, there's a water main and sewer main and logic lines that run through that, so it's really not a property that's developable. So with that, I can take any questions you have.
Sure. With that, Mr. Huber, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Ms. Hollenbeck? Mr. Palermo?
No.
Mr. Richards?
No. No questions.
Mr. Reed? Mr. Evelyn?
No questions.
I don't have any questions for you either. With that, I'd like to open it up for public hearing. Anybody would like to address the board, please come to the podium.
John Kaufman, 249 Hoffman Road. I had just had two simple questions. One, is any portion of this property within an EPod? And then I had a question, why was there the deed restriction that no single families could be built on it?
Anybody know the answers?
I was just going to see if Carrie was there.
Do you want to go up individually or wait till everyone? If there's anybody else who would like to address regarding this application. Seen, oh, one more. Go ahead, please.
My father lives over on Two Beach Terrace.
Could you please state your name and your address?
My name is Wesley Van Kuren. I live on 43 Sherwood Drive in Arundicote. And he is mentioning that the property runs into St. Paul Boulevard, but where in St. Paul does it run into, which right away is on Parview, there's on Wabash, where it goes around the curve there. See, I saw construction going on there during the year, like there was running like conduit or something, like sewer lines, I don't know what. There was a lot of work being done back there before all this is being presented, so what's going on? That's what I want to know. What's your plan? I mean, there's got to be something going on here.
He's got to answer you, but you've got to finish and then he answers and?
All right, I just know the protocol, that's all.
Any other questions?
Nope, all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board on this matter?
Sorry, Brian, I shouldn't have said that.
Okay, with that, I'd like to close the public hearing. Mr. Sharaba, would you like to address the questions asked?
Sure. To Mr. Kaufman's comments regarding deed restrictions, it's been my experience, and maybe counsel can help with this, that anytime CSX sells property, they put the deed restriction on there due to the fact that sometimes over the years contaminants due to the rail operation could occur. So they always put that in there so that there's no residential development that could impact that. So that's, that's been my experience. As far as EPods, there's no steep slopes, woodlots. We are, it's not adjacent to the river because we're stopped before it gets, the city of Rochester is under that jurisdiction. It is adjacent to the basin that was created by the yacht club, so I don't believe there are any EPods on that. And again, I don't know how that would affect an EPod because we're not proposing any new construction. Mr. Van Kuren spoke about construction earlier last year, 2017. RGNE removed a lot of the overhead wires, so there was some construction there. They basically buried the wires into a concrete culvert conduit from the river approximately 600 feet to the, to the east. That's the construction that he may have seen. There's also been some other activities, as I mentioned before, there's other easements and sewer lines in there. So from time to time, there is some activity from the utility companies that go in there and do some work on their mains. So I think that might answer his question as well. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, does the board have any other questions?
I could have kind of a blank question. Since there is that deed restriction, if someone, a prospect or someone came in looking at it, could that restriction be removed with testing and whatnot or is it forever because of it?
I might have to rely on counsel on that. It hasn't been my experience that there are things that have been omitted before. I know a portion of this railroad was omitted from the deed restriction process that was put on by the seller, but I don't know how to alleviate from that option.
So the way those documents typically work is it would be the party that's benefited by that restriction. Right here, it would be the railroad. They would be the one in a position to lift it if they ever were inclined to lift it. And I haven't seen this instrument, so I don't know if there's any sort of terms in there that would allow it to terminate by itself. But to your point, if it were to ever be lifted, it's most likely that the railroad would be the one to have to lift it. And that's not, not to say that they would do it or they wouldn't do it.
No, I know. But the whole piece is being divided. The western end is being sold and the eastern end is being retained by CE. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
Welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions? I don't see any. Okay. I just want to ask Carrie, I just noticed, oh, didn't I close it?
Not yet, no.
Close the public hearing. Thank you. Carrie, with, I just noticed that we just got Seeker paperwork.
I apologize, I didn't include it in, in the packet that Michelle provided to you. I apologize.
Okay, so it looks like a simple.
It is, it's, it is a.
Want to give us a little bit background?
I certainly can. So it's, this is an unlisted action for the purposes of Seeker and so a short environmental assessment form, part two and part three, has been provided for your review and consideration. It's a simple subdivision, dividing a, a single linear lot into two parcels. There's no development proposed as a part of the subdivision and so for the, the action itself doesn't, isn't linked to any adverse environmental impacts. And just as a note, if any future enhancement of the land or changes or modifications to the land use or development were being proposed on or in the parcels that are now being subdivided, that would be subject to future review by this board or perhaps another board and would be subject to additional environmental review.
With that, is there any questions? Seeing none. Would somebody like to make a motion on Seeker?
I can go ahead and make a motion if you'd like. On the matter of request by John Sharaba, acting as agent for FRS Properties LLC regarding the Seeker, I would move that we have this recorded as an unlisted action.
With that?
And would you propose a negative declaration?
Negative declaration, yes.
Sorry. All those, can I have a second, please? Second. All those in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All those against, please say nay. Nobody's absent. Nobody abstains. Now, could we please have a motion on this item?
In regards to public hearing, PB 1701-2, upon the matter of request by John H. Sharaba, acting as agent for FRS Properties LLC for subdivision approval to subdivide a 6.55 acre parcel into two lots on premises tax ID number 047.14-1-2.1 vicinity of 5045 St. Paul Boulevard and a waterfront development district, river harbor district, and R2 residential district as approved.
Second.
With that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Nobody's absent and nobody abstains.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
With that, we have items for board action that was added. So Carrie, would you like, or would you introduce that?
I'll just announce it. Town board, town board referral, local law to amend the section 235-7 of the town zoning code to clarify the interpretation of boundaries.
Thank you. With that, Carrie, could you please give us?
I sure can. The town board is taking up an action to amend the zoning code just to provide clarity in the district interpretation of boundaries. The language has been a little bit gray in the past and although it's been acted upon and implemented as it's, the way it was intended, the thought was to clear up the language and this way there was no room for misinterpretation or confusion about how zoning applies when a parcel on the map is either deemed as current for a rail line or is formally a rail line. And so the language, and you'll see that there was a local law, the draft copy of the local law was provided electronically in your packets for tonight. The town board had the public hearing for this last month. There were no speakers in the public hearing, just as a point of information. And so this is a pretty simple text change. And so the planning, or the town board, pardon me, before they can tag action, have to have the planning board's referral before they can move forward.
With that, it was just kind of introduced today. If there's any questions, now's the time to please ask them.
Is there a large difference between what existed and what you've produced?
It's a really minor change.
Which is?
The, in the existing code language, you sort of have to infer that the, the rail lines assume to the center line the zoning of the adjacent parcels. It's sort of inferred in the way that the language is currently written. And we don't like, at least my preference is for the code not to leave interpretation up to inference. And so we changed the language so it very clearly states that either current rail parcels, because they are parcel boundaries, assume the zoning code of the adjacent parcels to the center line. So for example, if a rail corridor parcel was bounded on all sides by a singular zoning code, then their zoning district, then the parcel would assume that zoning district coverage as well. If, say for example, one half was one district and the other half was another, it would go to the center line of the respective districts. And just to clarify so that it doesn't leave any gray area for folks.
Okay, so what you're saying is a rail line has, say, R1 on the north side and R2 on the south side, the southern half of that rail line is R2 or R1, whatever is on that side of the center.
Correct, to the center line. And that's how it's been implemented in the past and, and it's been reflected in past board action and past town decision-making. It's just the language doesn't really clearly state it, so we just thought we'd change the language.
And the intent, Michael, when we discuss this with staff is just to ensure that there's, you know, buffering that's in place now, that, you know, that R1 and R2, the split that you mentioned as an example, that the whole railroad bed doesn't go to R2 or R1, so we maintain a buffer and some consistency with existing zoning.
Yeah, no problem. I just wanted to get that in me terms, I guess.
Any other questions? So with that, I guess what we're looking for is either a positive or negative referral on amending the local law to amend section 235.7 of the town zoning code to clarify the interpretation of boundaries. Is there a second?
I'd move.
All that and all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, please say nay. Nobody's absent and nobody abstains. With that, the only remaining, any other comments on the other matter that's still tabled?
So the, just as a matter of, I know the information's been shared with this board, but we'll share it for the purposes of the audience and for the public at home. Our town engineer is in receipt of additional information from the applicant's engineer and is in the process of furnishing a memo to the, to town staff related to modifications and potential mitigation measures in the engineering of the project for Densmore Road. And so we anticipate modifying draft information with respect to Seeker. That will be provided to this board in advance of the workshop meeting for February. The meeting, the workshop meeting will be held February 13th, Monday night. Town engineer will be there at the meeting to discuss the Seeker, Seeker findings and, not, excuse me, not findings, but the environmental assessment that you might need to review as part of the Seeker determination of significance. And at that point, if there are no further questions and the board determines that no additional information is needed, then at the full meeting, you'd be able to take action on Seeker for that particular project or application.
Thank you. And with that, unless there's any questions? One remaining item. One remaining item, and Michelle's not here, but we remembered, as everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from December 19th. Providing they have, I'd like to know if there's a motion to approve them?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, December 19th, 2016, of the Planning Board as presented.
That's great, I'll second that, and with that, does everybody in approval say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody like to say nay, or...
Nay.
I will abstain, I wasn't...
Absent.
That may just happen.
Yeah, you may, you may wish to abstain instead of saying nay.
I will abstain, as I was not on the board at that time.
Two abstentions. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
That's nice.
So moved, thank you, thank you, everybody.